Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
Hello.
So. So Hannah, did you want to?
I guess we're gonna reorganize.
Yeah.
You wanna call it for?
Yeah, sure.
Call for us or? You can be voiced off stage.
Okay, that's better for me.
Just wanna call it for.
You wouldn't have wanted to switch.
Nomination.
Yeah, right?
I nominate John Bushy.
Wait, 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 let's, what are we doing? Let's, can you just introduce the?
Yeah, so welcome to the Planning Commission meeting on April 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We're gonna do a board restructure. Do I have any nominations for board chair?
Um, I would like.
Do we have to do like a roll call first?
Um, they didn't, it's like where they did that afterwards.
Uh, I would like to nominate Brian Harris, but I don't know if that.
He's a selectman now.
So he can't do it? Okay.
Yeah.
I rescind that.
Okay, I nominate John Bushy.
I'll second it.
And I'd like to make a nomination too, um, only because it's been rough for me for, with wrestling and stuff, that I would like to nominate Fred Miller for chair this time. Because of, uh, it's just been tough to be a chair at that same time.
Are you saying you don't want the position if elected, will you, will you serve?
Yeah, for chair, I would like to decline it. I could probably do assist, you know, vice chair or something, but it's, I just don't wanna be tied up too much with the wrestling season at the same time, so, at least to see how it goes, so, but nominate somebody else for that for this year.
I'll second that motion.
Michelle?
I'm, I'm gonna nominate Fred.
Any other nominations? I have to ask three times. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Fred as well.
Alright, so can we get a vote on that?
Why would we nominate twice?
So was that?
We just did.
So.
So then we have to take a vote on that?
Let's take a vote.
Yeah, so roll, vote on it, uh.
Stacy, aye.
Michelle, aye.
You aye?
Megan, aye.
John, aye.
Aye.
So.
Your chair.
It's tough to vote for yourself. Have fun!
You can, but, you know.
Yeah. Then you can, you take over for mayor to.
Okay. So we've, um, kind of started board restructure, um, to, to this point.
Yep.
Now we should do the roll call.
We should have nominations for vice chair, in case I'm not here.
I nominate.
I nominate John.
Okay.
What does the vice chair do? Nothing.
Don't show up.
Who did it? The chair isn't here.
Okay, I'll do, that's okay.
I'll second John. Anybody else? Any other nominations? We haven't done it three times? That was the first time.
Yeah, and then you're asked the second time.
What you did.
If you get a second, you can call.
Yeah, you just have to ask three times.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? That was the third. So, um, well, John Bushy was nominated as vice chair and seconded, um, roll call. Stacy Boxer?
Michelle, aye.
You aye.
Megan, aye.
John, aye. Well, I don't know, actually, I've had to abstain.
Fred, aye.
Okay, make sure he shows up.
And, um, we, the nominations for the role of clerk?
I nominate Stacy.
What does a clerk do, first of all?
I never know much. It would be in the absence of, we don't have a secretary like, like Hannah, then you would have to keep.
I think I was a clerk and I never did a thing.
Yes, you're right.
And also.
I was never called upon to do a thing.
Right.
It's very easy.
As long as we have, have a secretaries, they're basically notes are taken.
If we.
Get in enough trouble.
How do you take notes off the, uh?
Yeah, but I think, I do that afterwards, so you won't ever have to do that, really.
Okay. Stacy, also, if neither myself or John were here to be chair, you would, you would serve as chair.
Provided that we had a quorum.
If three other people were intended, you'd have a, have a quorum.
Make that one.
It'd have to be three addition to him? Somebody's.
I'll second it.
Are, do we have any other nominations for clerk? Do we have any other nominations for clerk? Do we have any other nominations for clerk? So we have Stacy Boxer nominated to be clerk and seconded, um, roll call.
Michelle, aye.
You aye.
Megan, aye.
John, aye.
Fred, aye. I can't call it like that.
You're now clerk.
Hey. So.
Next step up is mayor?
We completed.
Yeah, absolutely, you don't want that, trust me.
We made our board restructure, so, uh, moving on to, um, approval of agenda. Um, I'll re, I'll read the agenda, right from point one to point seven.
Vice chair, horrible.
You squeal?
What?
I'm sorry, just squeal.
Yeah.
This feels awful.
Yeah.
The alarm.
They can't fix it till the morning.
Yeah, that's the alarm system. Um, we had, we had started with board member roll call, we.
Really do, but it's okay.
Okay, we, we, follow, we followed through, followed up with board restructure. Uh, now we're on to item three, approval of agenda. Um, and the agenda is as follows, approval of minutes. Minutes of March 23rd, 2023, Planning Commission meeting. Followed by, and we're gonna add the minutes of January 17th, 2023, which was not able to be, um, approved, because we didn't have a quorum of present members. Um, after approval of minutes, we're gonna do a brief discussion regarding short-term rental ordinance research, followed by public comment, and then we will adjourn. So, I, I entertain a motion for approval of minutes. So moved. Stacy, aye.
I'll say, I need a second.
Oh, or second, oh, good.
You second.
Whoever, somebody seconds it.
Okay, we have, uh, a motion and a second, um, roll call. Um, we approving both? Uh, no, we're not approving that, we're, um.
Uh, working on for March 21st.
March 23rd. Okay. We're voting to.
Voting on that, to approve it.
Stacy, aye.
Michelle, aye.
I think I abstain.
Megan, aye.
Uh, John, aye.
Fred, aye.
Oh, you're right there.
And, wow, that's approved.
So, how come it says? That it's at meeting March 23rd here, but it's March 21st here.
This is, uh, 27th, that was my error on the agenda, she was at March 21st. But this was, you were the one that we had to table this one.
Yeah.
It's the 21st.
21st, yes, that was my error on the agenda.
Very good.
So you're voting aye?
Yeah, aye, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So we, we just approved the minutes of March 21st.
21st.
First.
Okay.
So now we're circling back to the minutes of January 17th. Everybody got those minutes? Those in attendance for that meeting were Brian Harris, Michelle, myself, Stacy, and Megan. So we do have a quorum to approve these.
Sorry to interrupt, can someone, but there's people waiting in the waiting room for Zoom.
Okay. Tonight, wait, the ears, the pain.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, January 17th, 2023.
I'll second it.
I have, John, you were president for.
I abstained.
Right, I get a motion to approve it, but I can't vote on it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Stacy, aye.
Michelle, aye.
You must abstain.
Megan, aye.
And John, abstain?
Fred, aye. Motion carries.
Okay, motion approved. So.
So we're moving on now to brief discussion regarding short-term rental ordinance research.
Could I start?
Megan, you can.
Yeah, well, I'd like to start with, uh, to say, with saying something positive about Airbnbs or, uh, short-term rentals, because there was a lot of kind of loose talk, and so, um, first, how many, uh, people present have, uh, stayed in an Airbnb?
I've stayed in Airbnb from Rockwood, Mass to Homer, Alaska, in northern south.
Yeah.
And find it very, very good.
Yeah, anyone else? So, um, Airbnb's are extremely well-regulated if they're actually called Airbnb. Uh, they have very strict regulations, but, um, what I wanted to say in positive is that they, the great thing about, um, Airbnb's is they're embedded in the community, so, you really feel like you're part of, where you, you get to see places you wouldn't see otherwise, and you really feel like you're part of the town, which I think is be a great thing for Powell, because if you just go by on Route 7, uh, you know, Powell doesn't really have.
Doesn't exist.
Much to recommend it, but whereas if you stay up in an Airbnb out in the, in the woods somewhere or whatever, you get a really, you get a feel for what a beautiful, beautiful town this is, so, um, so I did wanna say that, something positive, alright? And then, so I've been wondering is, why is there sudden need, why is there this sudden need to regulate, um, these small businesses? Uh, what, what does the select board expect to accomplish with this discussion? What, you know, why?
I don't, I don't think we ever did.
We never talked about that, and, um, what authority does the DRB have to tell the Planning Commission to talk about this? It's not their, they have no authority over us, so, I, you know, I, personally, I thought the select board and the Planning Commission were basically skewed toward business, small business, yes, because that's what we have, uh, and that, and, and kind of anti-regulation. Certainly, uh, the SWAT that, that Bob Jarvis, uh, recommended that we all read was definitely saying that there's too much regulation on business in Powell, and, uh, we, we, we need to change those bylaws. Even though those bylaws are only written five years, were only completed five years ago and, and, and passed five years ago, all, that's all. They're supposed to, you know, and they, and they were explicitly, uh, had the stated purpose of, uh, encouraging business and prosperity in Powell, okay, so, what are we trying to accomplish? I don't understand, and why? It seems, I, I've talked to people about it, I go around and I talk to people, and, uh, you know, I talk, right, Jimmy? So, uh, and it seems almost personal to, almost personal to a lot of people. Um, you know, why is it, uh, okay to amend the bylaws to allow a garbage, uh, business to, uh, build in a, in a, in a, in a residential neighborhood, in a net zone residential? Why is that okay, but it's not okay for a small business now? At the same time, you're gonna regulate small businesses, I, it just doesn't, it's inconsistent, I don't understand it. And, uh, you know, these businesses, these are mom and pop businesses that are filling a need for tourism and, and, uh, you know, why do we, and how are we gonna enforce? Okay, and then finally, in my research, okay, let me just tell you the results of my research, and then I'll shut up. So, uh, in my research, the towns that are regulating, they're all hot to regulate right now, uh, Airbnb's or, or short-term rentals, um, there seem to be three overall factors. Here are some of the types of towns and their motivations, okay? You get towns with large hotel industries, like Manchester, well, it is not hard to understand why the hotel industry would lobby, uh, to regulate their competition, okay, and say no more. There's also, secondly, there are cities with particular problems with a housing crunch, and they're just sort of desperate to, to, to fix it, attack the problem, and, like Burlington, okay, but that's a big, big, that's a, you know, it's a big city for Vermont, and it certainly, Powell doesn't, if Powell can't address the housing crunch in Powell by regulating Airbnb's. So, and the third thing is, the, the third type of town are towns with, uh, really with nearby ski areas, because that's the most, um, tourist, the biggest tourism draw, uh, where the proportion of, uh, short-term rentals to ordinary residences has become skewed, it's out of proportion, and so, uh, it's thereby changing the character of the town, okay? Do we see that in Powell? Uh, these are, these are places like Killington, Peru, Londonderry, they've all addressed this issue. Uh, and then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, we better address it too, well, wait a minute, as, uh, like, for an example, it's Stokes, okay? Near Stowe, Vermont, it has 138, uh, short-term rentals out of, uh, a total of 1,078 housing unit, uh, regular housing units, okay? By comparison, Powell has anywhere from 10 to 22, uh, short-term rentals, depending on whom you talk to, that have, um, led, uh, with that, uh, wait a minute, it's, out of, out of 1,773 residential units, okay? So it's a very different proportion, okay? So, Powell has none of the problems, uh, with short-term rentals that have led other towns to regulate. Why this anti-regulation, pro-business administration is, why is it so hot on this non-issue? Okay, and finally, when we, when, when we took the Vermont League of Cities and Towns training as a planning commission, uh, a few short months ago, one of the things that really stood out to me, because I, I was writing the ordinance, uh, the, uh, this, um, solid waste ordinance at the time, was that, uh, I was struck by the warning they gave that when bylaws and ordinances are not enforced, it engenders cynicism in your citizenry, okay? So how are we going to enforce, um, yet more regulations when we are stretched to the, to enforce the ones we have? Like, yeah, the, the solid waste ordinance? Are we willing to inspect private septics? Uh, and are, are we willing to, to, um, keep track of the number of visitors that a private residences, uh, have in their home? Are, are, are we, you know, maybe we should enforce the existing noise ordinance, which, not an ordinance, a, a bylaw. We have a noise bu, bylaw, we're just, why don't we enforce that? Why make something new? Or what, what is the whole, what are they wanting us to, to address here? What's the problem? I don't get it, okay? What about the trailer parks? Some of those trailers occasionally house as many as 10 people in a trailer, okay? Are we gonna go down and inspect them? It would sure look fishy if we didn't, if we are just based it on a certain small business fact, uh, element. It, it looks prejudicial, if you ask me. So again, I wanna know, what is the point besides bossing small business owners around and frankly, being officious? Let's try to enforce the regulations we have before going off half-cocked to create new ones that are, uh, unenforceable and will rouse negative feelings in small business owners. Okay, that's, that's my research, that's what I came up with.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
I just wanna make one comment. I have been unaware of the select board having initiated this, this.
Yeah, so where did it come from?
Well, that's, that's the only thing I wanted to say.
Yeah, I would like to know where it came from. Do you know, John?
Well, wait, wait, let me, let me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you were.
That's all, that's my, that was my statement, I, I, if the select board initiated, I, I've been unaware of that.
Yeah.
So, um, no.
No, they did not, okay.
No, they did not. Jim had a comment.
Well, you expect, what, what we expected to hear, and what we did hear was very, very good. I know more about this from the people who run the businesses, and that's what we know about from the people actually working, and I'm very impressed that we have that many, and that's exactly what we're gonna hear from the people who run these places, and they look like they run them real well. And being in business myself, I appreciate things that fail, things that don't, machines that don't work, air conditioners don't work, that's my problem.
Yeah.
And that's their problem. But, there was an incident, like I said, I know several people that added on to properties and their septic failed, and that's, you fix it, but you buy a piece of property and then you add on to it, then you water, you, you, I run well? I run well for years, 40 years, and it fails. Too many people end up taking showers, that's their problem, and they've solved it very well, and it's what we're here for. I don't think we ever started out to say we're gonna come out and get these people. They really do a good job.
Yeah.
And I know the customers that come to town, they're part of me.
Right, yeah.
And the people that run them.
If we had more businesses for them to go to, they would be using them, you know? Cafes, whatnot.
Okay, so my research was, I was looking at pros and cons of these short-term rentals, and it seems like the towns that wanna regulate this, they're regulating it because they're afraid that there's too many of these places and there's not enough rentals for employees of ski areas, you know? Once again, like Stowe, they mentioned, that's primarily the reason they wanna regulate it.
Is that a problem with Powell?
No, it's not.
Like Tanglewood, and something like that, your surrounding towns.
And I feel, if somebody's septic goes, they're, they're gonna close down and fix the septic, or nobody's gonna come there.
Sure, and you guys thought they had a bad review.
Programs like Yelp, and people will give it a bad review.
That's right.
If they smell a septic smell, and other people come and the same problem, so I think, you know, my opinion is, live and let live.
Yeah.
Let these people do what they do, they're trying to make a buck, they're not getting rich.
Yeah.
You know, they're just trying to make a buck.
Nobody's getting rich, and the proportion is small in Powell.
I, I think it's not a bad idea to have some sort of registry to know who has a business in town, but not a fee, no, you know,
Yeah.
inspections, like why? What, you know, I think we need to pick our battles better.
Right.
My, 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 I, I like the idea of a registry, but for me, it would be a registry of rentals in general. Yes.
All rentals.
Yes, just to know who is renting their home, and to make sure that home is, if it's a long-term or intended.
Short-term.
Starts out as a long-term, but ends up as a short-term, because things are not good with that home, you know? Um, and, you know, when the health officer gets called about, about a rental problem, how do you even verify this person's renting from, from this, this person, you know, it's like, you have, you have no record in, in the town of any, who's the occupant, who's landlord, and, and any of this stuff, so it just adds, adds more work, and, believe it in Powell, you go around in circles.
But, but I, Fred, I would like to ask, is there, have, have there been, uh, have you had calls as a health officer to Airbnb's or short-term rentals?
No.
So I think it's a non-issue.
Yeah, um, if it's, if it's specifically about Airbnb's, which is, uh, is a regulated, but it is regulated by the state.
But, yeah.
Okay, they, they, they take care, they take care of everything, from what I understand. And, you know, and you, you, you mentioned the mobile home parks, that's, that's pretty much handled by the state as well.
Yeah.
They're, they're in the rental business, the state is, so.
Oh, yeah, I know, well, they're desperate.
Tax-free, it's a business.
It's, well, we've reached it, we have reached a desperate, desperate crunch all over the country with housing, but, so I'm not.
But if you have a. I'm in, I'm in. Even if there was 20 Airbnb's or short-term rentals that people are coming up here, I don't think that's gonna affect.
No.
Rental market in Powell.
No, I don't, I can't see how it would.
Another thing, if they were on Main Street, say, in Bennington.
Yeah.
I think, I think in my research, I did discover, looking at Peru, um, they have, um, they have a large ski area.
Yeah.
As part of their, their community, um, and that drew into a development, Bromley Village.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty big cluster of housing, um, and I think their concern when they, when they, they did the ordinance, it was, uh, they're always watching for, um, because I guess Bromley Village is, is, is built out to its maximum capacity, so they're, they're just wanting to watch out for developments that would be, you know, building big houses and.
Well, that's, that's.
Calling, calling them.
That's responsible.
Airbnb's.
In our case.
It doesn't apply here. It doesn't, it really, it does not apply.
Because we don't have a ski resort, unfortunately, there's not enough snow.
John?
Um, one of the things is, I, I think it's, um, I'm not gonna say out of hand like that, but it, it's a little bit out of hand with thinking that was just gonna be about regist, uh, like strong-arming these things, that's not what discussion was about. When this is all put on here, the discussion was about, does anyone in the board, that's why we discussed it on a board, does anybody think that it should be talked about more and discussed more, that there, could there be problems down the road that we need to address now before they come, or is there nothing down the road? That's kind of what the discussion was, was more.
I say we burn that bridge when we come to it, and I say, I would like to, um, make a, a motion that we, we table this and that, and we do nothing. I think things are doing well in Powell, as far as short-term rentals are.
I would second that.
Again, my, my only concern back when we started this was, if, I know that more people go into them, like, I know there's places that will do parties, so they put more people into the locations, and I know that when a house, I've, I've put in many septic systems in my time, that state law requires how big your septic system could be.
Right.
And if it's set for a four, four-person family, meaning usually typically adults and children, whatever they set that flow rate at, if you go over that flow rate.
But what, yes, but that's based on a seven-day system. If you're getting someone in Friday, Saturday, and they're leaving on Sunday, it's not gonna be the same.
Well, John, what happens if, say, you have, uh, God forbid, you, suddenly, your mother-in-law and your father-in-law have to come and move in with you, and it's nothing to do with Airbnb rental at all, or, you know, they just, you have a house with.
Technically, you can exceed the amount you're allowed.
You know, are you gonna go, have to go register and get, be on some registry Sunday?
No, it's not, doesn't say that at all, that's not, that's not what it's talking about.
So I mean, are we gonna?
For me, it's only that, do we do nothing right now and see if anybody fails?
I, that's what I moved.
Did they, did they take the proper steps to, to go and fix it? Cause that's sort of the thing that's seen in the past.
They have to, if they wanna stay in business, you know?
I'm sure there are houses in town.
You should.
That have a failed system that they can't afford to fix, so they just leave it.
That, that happens a lot, it's like cleaning up trash and stuff in town, they should have it cleaned up, but they didn't, and that's why we had to build an ordinance, so.
But has that been an issue with short-term rentals? No, it hasn't.
No, it hasn't been.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's problems with short-term, I, I think it's great that they're doing that stuff, but I wanna be vigilant in, in, in the future.
I think we should burn that bridge when we come to it.
So we have a motion to table the discussion indefinitely, or?
I think we should do nothing.
Until.
It's fine, the way it is.
Nothing.
Uh, to, nothing to regulate Airbnb's and.
They've educated us, okay?
Yeah.
Those people have educated us, and I think they do a great job, and I just wouldn't leave it alone.
If they want to.
We have a second, and we've already had, we, I would normally ask if we have any discussions, but we already had it.
Yeah.
So, um, I think.
That might have.
Michelle, did you have anything?
No, I, I think the whole short-term rental thing, I don't know where, I know. No, I, I think the whole short-term rental thing, I don't know where, I know it came up at the DRB. I don't know why it came up. I think it's an absolute non-issue. I mean, when, most of these Airbnb's, it's, you know, a couple or, you know, small family come to stay, they're not staying a long time. I don't think it's affecting the septic. I mean, what, what would be the difference if I was like having 50 people at my house every weekend for a party and having them on my septic? I mean, I'm just a regular owner. I mean, I'm, I'm not going to do that. And I don't, I don't think that these, the short-term rental people are trying to destroy their own septic systems by overloading with people. You know, I can see maybe the occasional party or, or something, but I don't think it's going to affect anything. And I, I think we should just leave it alone. It's, it's, they're, they're private, they're private residents, it's their business and it's none of our business. And my research was, because I went and stayed in Austin for a week in an Airbnb. I just got back.
How fun. Austin's great, isn't it?
Yeah, not as great as it used to be, but yeah.
I would just say like officially, not officially, that's the wrong word. I, I would just like to be on record as saying, I think, you know, obviously it originated at the DRB and it followed up at the planning commission. And I think the DRB and planning commission were doing their jobs, discussing things, discussing. And they should, should be encouraged, they should discuss things.
Oh, yeah.
You know, it'll ruffle feathers, and this is panel, feathers are going to get ruffled.
I, I.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want any members or any boards to think that they can't discuss things. If there's something, if an individual is concerned about an issue, bring it up, have a brief discussion, maybe get to the point where you might want to see what the select board feels about it, if it's not initiated by a select board.
Okay, so what's.
But just don't, a word of reason should not be forbidden to, to discuss anything.
No, but, but it would be helpful to know where the discussions come from. Who is initiating?
We all know that.
We all, I didn't, we didn't all know that. I don't, I don't, I'm not on the DRB.
They got talked about. And.
I didn't, I didn't know about the discussion until the second one was, was already history. Because I was just was focusing on other things.
Well, I think, you know, I think there should be a clear line of authority.
Well, again, a member of the development review board, they met first, a member had concerns, wanted to discuss it, and it went from there to, went to the planning commission, it continued. And it's just, it's a discussion following a normal, a normal trail.
Well, but the DRB has no authority to tell us to discuss.
We can't, I'm not going to tell the DRB not to discuss anymore.
No, they got to.
I'm going to say, you know, for, we, we are ready to vote on it here at the planning commission, the motion to, to table it. And the motion was seconded and discussion has been had, so let's do a real call.
So first and second, motion and second.
Stacy, aye?
Michelle, aye.
Jim, aye.
Megan, aye.
John, aye.
Fred, aye.
All done. Out of this. And it only happened after that. What else do we have to do today?
Are we? Is there any, anybody in the public?
The fact that I started here first, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I hope everyone can hear me. I'm at a ultimate frisbee game for my kids. But I, I want to thank you for the discussion tonight. And I just want to kind of talk about a couple of points really quickly that you said. One is that absolutely these boards have a right to discuss any issues that may come up that are, you know, relevant to the public. But I do also want to point out that the public boards have a responsibility to speak responsibly, especially when they're speaking about local businesses and people in town. And there were some very, very kind of irresponsible statements made about short-term rentals, one of them being that we place a heavy burden on first responders. And, you know, I, I, I appreciate what you did tonight, which is everyone went and did research and then they discussed it publicly. And we also know in panel, you say one thing with a little bit of misinformation in it and it can spread like wildfire. And there's a story going around panel that these Airbnb's are causing a burden on first responders. So I just encourage everyone to be very responsible in how they speak about these things. You know, those of us that have Airbnb's, as you said, we're not rolling in the dough. I've done it to help preserve that house for us. And we've had parties there and guess what I make them do? I make them rent a porta potty. You know, you know why? Because I don't want my septic system to fail. And just like anyone that has large events at their home, whether they're a short-term rental or they just host events at their home, et cetera, et cetera, they're going to take care of their own property. You've got to trust us. So I thank you for your discussion and thank you for tabling it. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Jenny, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. I, I also want to say thank you for tabling it. There were a couple of things said tonight that are actually absolutely not true. No one has housed 50 people in their homes ever. I had the largest ones, one, and now I have one of the smaller ones because we have moved in. And we don't, we have never had more than 25 people. The biggest one right now is Quarry Hill Farm that sleeps 15 people. That was the one with the septic went down and that had nothing to do with the number of people in the house. It was because a tree root broke the septic system and it was facing down versus up. And I took care of housing all of them. I work for Sally, I don't make money if we have to refund it all. So I didn't make a penny on this week-long rental, which should have been a good payday for me. And I rehoused them because that's what responsible owners do. I took them to Doug's place, who, who could fit us because he didn't have it rented for Christmas. So I rehoused them, we canceled the next two guests, Sally had the septic fixed as a responsible owner does of any home. And so that is just incorrect information that an addition caused the septic to burst or any of the, or that there were 50 people staying at the house that caused the septic to hurt, burst. There were 15 people at the house, it was a large family. And yeah, and I've heard a few times that we're having these wild parties. No one is having wild parties in panel, it's not happening. So, so I appreciate tabling it. And I do also agree that yes, of course you can discuss things, but this discussion in the planning commission level was brought to you because the DRB assigned you to discuss it and that is not the line of order of discussion. It's supposed to come from the select board. So, so thank you for tabling it and I just wanted to clear up those two inaccuracies. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Danny.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, any more? Jim, do you want to go ahead?
Hello, people, Jim Coates is calling North Mason Hill Road. First of all, I have to disagree with everything you guys had said today about tabling it and saying there's no problems or anything like that. It doesn't matter if there's problems or not. This is a board that brings to the town maybe suggestions on how, we're not trying to regulate, but how do we make sure that what is happening to my, my property and someone next to me opening up an Airbnb, why am I going to allow it to happen without any, any enforcement or something to make sure they're doing it correctly? Yes.
That's a DRB.
Well, well, whatever. But Michelle, private business, let them do what they want for their business? How many private businesses are doing out there with auto parts repairs and they're doing what they want to do? And look at some of them, they're a mess. There are cars out in front, look at anywhere you go, there's a mess in panel. And we're just turning a blind's eye and saying, oh, we'll just let them do what they want to do because there's nothing happening now? Well, back when we had no bylaws, there was nothing happening? No, there were lots of things happening, but we didn't have a way to regulate it. We need, we don't need to regulate how many people they have. We don't need to regulate if they have a septic system. We need to regulate the traffic on the road. We need to regulate whether the, if there's a, enough feet in between a business and something else. I mean, there are, I don't know the whole aspects of bylaws and things like that, but we cannot just table something like this. What is out on South Stream Road is something that everyone is turning a blind's eye on and it's time that someone turn around and do something with South Stream Road and figure out whether the permit was approved properly and whether it was a prop, a permit that was not completed correctly. And the shed that was put up, maybe it wasn't a shed, it was a garage. I'm sorry, but you guys just did not. And, and I said to the board the other day.
That's not our job, Jim.
Yeah, it's not our, that's not this board.
That's not the planning commission's job. That's, the, the DRB is supposed to be in charge of that.
Well, I'll bring it up to them tomorrow, but it's got to start here and it's got to start in the whole public. I'm going to talk about this in public so that something does happen, but everyone is turning a blind's eye. Who cares about the neighbors over on South Stream Road? You guys, have you guys driven by there and seen what it looks like?
Well, I don't know about, what are you guys talking about?
Yeah, this is, we're way off the subject of short-term rentals.
I live on South Stream, so I don't know what you're talking about.
That's fine. I'm just saying, I don't think you should have, I don't think you should have tabled it tonight. I think it should move on and put it in the bylaws of how Airbnb's should be properly brought into the town. I don't care how many, I just want to make sure.
Jim, we've discussed it openly, publicly, and the discussion now is tabled. And, you know, you, you're welcome to write letters to the, to the select board, get petitions, get, get grassroots movement going, anything you want to do, Jim, and bring it to the proper, proper boards and we'll, we'll act accordingly. But for now, the discussion is tabled and we're going to ask if there's any other comments from the public.
Thank you for your input, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments, Hannah?
I would like to ask some public comments.
What's up?
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for.
See, Jim is worse than I am.
Very, very good discussion. Take everybody in the public that was watching or commented, thank you for your comments.
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, it's good to have.
Good comments.
Something that people get interested in.
Hey, you're all interested in panel.
What's up?
I think if, 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 if short-term rental people think that having a registry would be a good thing.
That would be.
They should, they should let us know. I mean, well, I haven't heard anything.
That's a question I was thinking about asking, but I didn't.
Yeah.
And it might be, it might be topic for further discussion.
I mean, there was, there was a thing, what was it called? The, the panel business registry, but that's.
I've tried to do that for 10, 20 years.
Yeah, if we, if we get into the, the registry of businesses, then it's like, then we have to do everybody's business.